Let me just get my, I've just gotta get the record button here, if you'll wait one second. Okay.
All right, calling the meeting to order at four thirty-six on August twelfth. In attendance is myself, Fred Matrulie. George.
George Mitchell.
And Joseph Caruso.
Joe Caruso.
Board members, so we have a quorum. Okay, first item on the, on the list is case number five dash twenty. It's the address is citywide, it's the city of Utica, owner of city of Utica. And the proposed action is a zoning text and map amendment. The city of Utica is proposing the adoption of a new zoning ordinance pursuant to section two dash twenty-nine dash one twenty-three-two of the city zoning ordinance. The planning board shall commence a public hearing on the proposed amendment no more than ninety days from the date of the application for said amendment. Where said amendment is filed with the commissioner of codes enforcement. Public notice of such hearing shall be made in the prescribed manner. At the six, is July sixteenth meeting, the planning board held a public hearing and ultimately tabled the case in order to allow Oneida County's Department of Planning the necessary thirty days to provide. The thirty day period has since expired with no comment from Oneida County. Present at the public hearing were two representatives for Northrop Grumman, Lucas Western, who own approximately twenty-two acres of land at the former Bendix site in South Utica. They had submitted a written request for the board to consider revisions to the zoning code. At tonight's meeting, the board will vote to make a recommendation to the council either in favor or in opposition to the adoption of the proposed zoning text and map amendment. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Before you do, I, I just wanted to read the planning staff recommendation.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Pretty, pretty concise. Planning staff endorses, um, let's see. Okay. Apologize. At the last meeting, if you recall, we had received a letter from representatives of Grumman, Lucas Western, who own approximately twenty-two acres of land at the former Bendix site in South Utica. They had submitted written requests for the board to consider revisions to the zoning code. Of the requested modifications, planning staff has no issue with three of the four. The one outstanding issue pertains to municipal parks. And with respect to the request, the city of Utica would never develop a municipal park on a privately owned parcel of land, what industrial or residential. We feel that this modification is unwarranted and do not recommend modifications that they had requested. However, we have spoken since and would agree to define the definition of municipal park to state that municipal parks would not be constructed on privately owned land. Planning staff endorses the proposed zoning code update for many reasons, which include but are not limited to the following. Consistency with the master plan adopted in twenty-eleven, approved format including more graphics and tables to make the document easier to interpret.
Sorry.
And elimination of auto overlay and gateway overlay along with reduction of zoning districts from nineteen down to ten. Furthermore, planning staff recommends that the planning board vote to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the common council.
Okay, now that we know that, we have the recommendation, does anybody wish to make a motion?
Well, I have a question, is this, is the motion just to begin a period of questions, or is that just to vote to approve or disapprove?
The mo, the motion would be to give a recommendation or a positive or negative to the council to adopt these amendments.
I, I just have a question about the auto overlay, uh, removal of that auto overlay zone. It was my recollection that we just enacted that not too many years ago, is that true? And if, or did we just modify it? And is it being removed now?
That was in two thousand and two, so eighteen years ago.
Well, I wasn't on the board then, but in the time that I have, we did deal with the auto overlay. Was it a modification of the auto overlay? But I know it came up in conversation, actually rather contentious conversation a few years ago.
Any, anytime that this, the board has dealt with the auto overlay zone and, you know, recent, the recent past, you've been affiliated with the board. It has been people requesting to expand upon the existing auto overlay zone. Um, if you recall, in two thousand and two, while they felt that that was the best means to address issues with auto related uses in the city, um, they felt they could possibly consolidate auto uses to, you know, certain sections of the city where they already existed, or they felt, uh, when it, they felt would be the best places to have them. Um, so things obvi- obviously got overlooked as, as happens sometimes. Um, the most recent case I think we had was trying to expand the auto overlay district to ex- expand and cover Bleecker Street in Culver Ave, where Dairy Dell, Outer Dimensions Plus, Catrups, Nineties, and that whole area was, um, and, and you did do expand the district. But people have come before the board, you know, before the zoning board a number of times because they want to purchase a building that might have, it might have been an auto overlay, an auto use in the past. And it was no longer grandfathered because there was a six month lapse in operation. So even though it had historically been an auto use, they would still have to go before the zoning board in order to reopen that. I mean, just like anything, just like neighborhood convenience stores or things that existed in the neighborhood prior to the nineteen ninety-four zoning code. With, with the elimination of the auto overlay, peop- people would still, they would, there was, there will still be stringent guidelines, criteria to meet in order to open up your auto related business. So there's a lot of regulation by the city, uh, whether it be the zoning board or the planning board, uh, to make sure that this is not going to, uh, cause a, a negative effect to the surrounding community and the surrounding neighbors. Um, so while, while the overlay goes away, the, I think nineteen pages of restrictions and guidelines do not go away. Uh, and there still is a regulation of auto uses. It's just not limited to specific, I think there's six or seven.
Chris, excuse me a second, Chris.
Excuse me, excuse me, one second, this is Councilman Beatrice here, and please, uh, please tell me if I'm out of line even speaking. I just, uh, I just got a couple of questions because I'm a little bit confused. You guys just went from the Bendix property into the property over by Dairy Dell. So my, my question to you is, the Bendix property, what, and you were talking about, um, not putting a park in residential areas, what is the plan for that property? Where, or did I just miss what you were talking about?
No, there, there's, there's no specific for the property.
Right.
We were just discussing a couple of different, um, the owners of the property had a meeting, last meeting was a public hearing. Uh, tonight's not a public hearing.
Okay, so am I, am I out of line even talking because I'm sorry if I am? I'm just asking because I've never been on your meetings, so I'm, I'm just asking.
And that's.
Because number one, this is gonna come, this is gonna come to the common council?
Yes.
I imagine I'm, I'm the only council person that's on, so I want to know everything so I can bring it to try to help you guys, okay? So you went from, wait a second, you went from Bendix over to Dairy Dell? And you, you kinda lost me. My only, my only concern is if we're changing any zoning whatsoever, okay? No matter, and I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, but the person, the people who own those properties need to get a letter and need to be told that we want to change your zoning.
Uh, hi, hi, Councilman Beatrice, this is attorney Kate Hartnett, how are you?
Hey Kate, how you doing? How's everything?
Good, so, Councilman, I just want to clear up a couple of things for you.
Okay, that's, that's why I'm here, Katie.
No problem, so this is an update to the entire zoning code, it's a repeal and replace, and it applies to the entire city. So all of the zoning classifications are changing. Um, this, the public has had input on this, um, it's been going on for years. I'd also just let you know that the planning board actually held a public hearing on this. Um, the planning board held, held a public hearing on this last month. And also, common council has filed a resolution I provided for the common council to do a public hearing. But the common council, if it's on the ordinance, is also required. Um, I'd also like to just clear up the issue with the Bendix plant site and the Dairy Dell. So, um, uh, the reason that came up is because.
Um, Kate, everyone, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt, Kate, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, if somebody has a lot of background noise that's interrupting this meeting, um, I don't know.
Just ask everybody to just mute their, their, if they're not speaking, everybody should be muting their, uh, speakers.
Yeah.
Yes, once again, if you are on the line and you're not speaking, can you please mute your phone so that we don't get the background? Thank you.
So, so as I was saying, the reason the Bendix site came up is because its successor owner, Northrop Grumman, um, has concerns about how the property is owned because, correct me if I'm wrong here, Chris, it, 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 it affects the limits of their, or, or the, the extent of their potential, I think, liability for any environmental problems that could be on site there. So they don't want the property to be eligible for certain uses, uh, based on that, and they have made that request. Um, the zoning board was given that information, I believe, at the last meeting, and they're free to consider that request and incorporated into their, excuse me, the planning board is free to take that information and incorporate it into their recommendation. Now, we next went to the Dairy Dell site because, uh, pound, uh, excuse me, uh, board member Joe Caruso had a question about the auto overlay, and didn't we just do something with the auto overlay, why are we changing things again? And, and that's why we went from the Bendix site to the auto overlay. And, um, count, uh, planning board member Caruso is absolutely correct that we have recently considered the auto overlay, I remember two or three years ago, if I'm not mistaken, we extended the auto overlay zone into that area of East Utica, I think by Dairy Dell.
Correct.
And, uh, to, to conform a property there that was, that had historically been auto into, you know, auto. So, uh, that is why those two came up in succession the way that they did. Uh, Councilman Beatrice, have I, have I answered your question?
And, and you did, I just, you did, and like I said, I just want to be able, I want to be prepared so when this comes in front of us in caucus, that I could, you know, support what you guys are looking for. But I, I also know, and, you know, I'm not a lawyer like you are, I'm a soda man, and I'm learning, learning the ropes of being a councilman. And I know I've read this, I've tried this hundred and twenty-three page document, and I get to the fourth or fifth page and I have no idea what I read. So I have a lot of commercial properties in North Utica, which Leland Ave is a big part of it. We have the business district in North Utica, we have the harbor, and I, I don't really know the difference from if what's getting changed and what's not getting changed, okay? And granted, every property owner who is in that area should be on top of this, but I don't want to be in a position that two or three months down the road, these people are calling me and we pass something. That's all I'm asking, so I think, in my opinion, that anybody who owns a property that anything is getting changed on should receive a letter. That's all I have, that's, that's just my opinion, and if I'm totally out of line, please tell me. But I'm, I, I hope you understand what I'm trying to say.
I do, I certainly do, Councilman, and I think that's a thing that, um, council agrees should happen before a zoning amendment, I think that that's definitely something the council, the council should, should, you know, legislate going forward.
And that will happen. That's all, that's, and I, I'm sorry, I just, I just, uh, I just want to know a little bit on what's going on, and it's a little bit over my head at this time, so that's why I'm on this meeting to listen.
That's fine, and, and once again, the planning board tonight, uh, they're merely taking an action to make a recommendation favorable or unfavorable to the common council. Uh, they're in no way making any decisions regarding the adoption of this. This is merely a recommendation of, of the board. Um, the, the final action will come from the common council, and as Kate pointed out, there will be a public hearing about this, and the council will, is certainly welcome uh, to contact us with any questions that you have regarding this, because it is, it is a lot. It's also, you know, understandably, you know, difficult because this has been going on for the last, I think we've been in the process for the last four years. Um, we actually received a grant for this update in twenty fourteen. So it has been some time. Uh, there have been many public engagement, um, you know, meetings, uh, back in pre-COVID time. Uh, we, we did however, you know, get tied up with some other things, but we're, we're getting back at this now in the final stages. And, um, again, they're, they're making a recommendation tonight to, um, you know, approve or disapprove of this and just make a simple recommendation to the council.
So, um, if, if, um, if, if, if that's behind us, I'm not sure if it is, I'm, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize if I did. I, I'm curious if the question that Joe had, Joe, uh, Caruso asked, um, has been satisfactorily responded to Joe, I mean, are you comfortable with what has been said here regarding the overlay?
My takeaway was that while the zone, auto overlay zone goes away, the restrictions for consideration of an auto use property have not, so that safeguards, uh, the use, so I'm.
Absolutely.
Thank you, George.
And I have one more question, Fred, if you don't mind, um, regarding the Bendix or the, yeah, well, the old Bendix property, okay? Um, so I wanted to come back to that, so, so the concern that, uh, Lucas has is that they don't want, they don't want a zoning change to perhaps increase their liability as it relates to, um, the environmental conditions on that property. Um, and how is that being addressed in this, or how have, you, you started to talk about that a little bit, Chris, um, and then we moved on, I, I, I feel like I need to understand that a little more. I mean, don't, don't we, don't, doesn't the EPA already restrict what goes on their property or what can go on their property?
The, the EP, there would be restrictions depending on what the future use of the site was.
Yeah, that's why they want to limit.
That would dictate the extent of the remediation or cleanup that would have to be done. A residential use, for example, would require the most.
Cleanup.
Yes, the, it would require the most cleanup, it would be the most restrictive. Um, I'm just trying to find a map here.
Yep, so, uh, the way it's zoned today, it does not allow for residential, correct?
Now, it's.
I don't know, I don't even remember how it's zoned today, but it's.
Now, I'm getting, I'm getting to this right now, you'll just, I've got the two maps side by side here. There's a couple of different zoning classifications on it, so if you're familiar with the site at all.
I am, I mean, I mean, that's, that's my, my part of the world, okay?
If you go to the front door of Seward Ave at the old, you know, Bendix site, the front half of this twenty-two acres is light industrial.
Yes.
The back portion of this, there are four parcels.
They're but a full residential area, yes.
There's two residential kind of buffers there.
Yes.
Uh, that's largely wooded. Um, so they're looking to have one zoning classification. Um, yeah, I believe what we've done is expand, let me just get the updated map here before I speak out of line here.
Chris?
So what they've, so what they've done is the back, the front portion, which is light industrial, will remain industrial. It will expand into the formerly single family residential area where it used to be, but.
Is that, is that based on, is that based on their request, or was that part of our original plan here?
This was a mix of both of these, and let me just show you what I'm talking about here. Because we wanted to make sure that there is still a buffer of land conservation area.
Yes.
I'll put this side by side, if I just figure out how to share this, one moment, please bear with me.
Okay.
Share content. Do you see this now? Can you see the zoning?
I cannot.
Okay, let's.
Yeah.
How about this? Can you see this?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh.
Let's try something else. I apologize. You'd think that six months into COVID procedures, we'd be able to figure out these a little bit better. Okay. Let's.
There we go.
Okay.
It looks like it's working, yes, we can see that now.
Okay, so let me just do something really quick here. So the green area, so let me just first point out the associated parcels. This is Seward Ave and then French Road. This is one parcel, this is the second, a third, a fourth, a fifth, a sixth, and a seventh. Currently, this parcel and this parcel are, um, are zoned as industrial. Now, or light industrial. They would like to expand. They would like to expand the light industrial zone to include this parcel and this parcel. The green parcels will not be able to be developed as industrial, these are land conservation parcels.
And where, where the, Chris, I'm sorry, just, I want to make sure I'm following you. The previous two parcels that they wanted to include in light industrial, um, is, was that, was that previously zoned the same way as the green?
The, no, the two, can you see this screen, the old zoning?
Yeah.
So this parcel and these parcels were zoned single-family medium density.
Right.
Now.
I remember, that's right.
They would just, to expand the industrial to include this edge and where this parking area is, the rest of this, oh, sorry, hold on. The rest of this would remain a buffer of land conservation area to ensure that there's no encroachment upon the surrounding neighborhood. So I, I don't have a measurement here of how much this is expanding into the wooded area and parking lot, but, um, it's, it's not.
Honestly, of everything that's being done here, and I've, and I, and I think, you know, I've spent a little time on this early on in the process, so I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the zoning changes that I, I have no problem with everything's being done. This is the only area that I had some concern, I'm still not clear on, um, and, uh, and it's only because it impacts residential area. It, it is a zoning change, um, that may impact, um, some of the homes in that, in that back area, or, or, yeah, well, those homes in that back area, period. So, yeah, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead, I was just going to bring up the zoning definition of land conservation.
Okay.
So land conservation is designed to protect the health, safety, and general wealth, reduce impact of flooding on homes and businesses, and to protect the ecosystem of, of floodplain. It also contains active and passive recreational areas in the city. Now, if we go to the district, let's see, hold on here. Might not want to look at the screen right now because it'll probably make.
Delete, yeah.
Trying to find the land conservation area here. Actually, you know what? Better yet, I'll get to the use table. So if you, if you notice this use table here where my cursor is, there are a lot of blank spaces. The blank spaces indicate that the uses are not permitted.
Okay.
So we're going to scroll down here to show you what is permitted. That includes a cemetery, a municipal park, essential services, uh, geothermal energy, public utilities, uh, you know, solar, and that is pretty much it. Um, with the use permit, we, we've actually made a modification that a cemetery would require a special use permit, and it's would sort of agricultural or, um, or, or part, potential park use. Um, but those, that's how restrictive this land conservation area is.
Okay.
Again, to just bring up the map, we wanted this as a buffer between the neighboring houses on French Road and Lion Place, to make sure that there was enough of a buffer for any potential future development on this site. They still own these three parcels, but they're very restricted on what they can do on that, on those three parcels.
Then I, then I got, and I appreciate that explanation, Chris. I asked, my, my only question was, the two parcels that were brought into the, the light industrial zoning, the, the pink zoning, what were they previously? Were they also conservation?
There was never land conservation in this area, um.
Okay.
This was just, this was single-family medium density.
I got it, okay.
Medium density. So again, the land conservation is even more strict than the single-family.
So we're, we're, we're eliminating, at least in this, in this area, um, in this, these parcels, uh, single-family designation and, and moving to a, a buffer instead, the land cover, uh, conservation buffer, and square, and squaring off that property, um, it's, to French Road.
Correct, because as you can see, this, this was formerly their parking lot.
Yes.
In the back here, there are no houses within the three parcels, uh, designated for land conservation.
Mm-hmm.
Those would remain wooded, uh, wooded areas, again, to provide a natural buffer to any development that would take place in this industrial area.
All right, I got it, I got it, that, that's very helpful, thank you.
Yep. That, that there, um, here we are. Lost my screen.
Okay, now, now that we've had this discussion, uh, does anybody wish to make a recommendation, uh, pro or con to this, uh, amendment?
I, I'll make a recommendation, uh, Fred, to, uh, support this, uh, the change, uh, recommend that we, Kate, help me with the language as usual.
It's just that we're gonna, we're just recommending the, the amendment of the zoning code, uh, to the council.
Make a motion the way you usually do, that you move to make a recommendation to, um, you know.
Support.
Yeah, to support the zoning code as it's been presented, yeah.
I'll make that recommend, I'll make that, uh, motion, uh, Fred, to support the recommendation, uh, to, to recommend or support the recommendation of, of the zoning change, okay?
To the council. And I'll se- I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
There are four ayes?
Yep, it's unanimous.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Now, this is going to be a chore reading this thing, I don't think anybody's.
Better you, Fred, than me.
Okay, case number six dash twenty, portion of Burston Road, applicant is the city of Utica, owner is the city of Utica. Okay, pursuant with section one zero one of the second-class city's law and section twenty-seven fourteen A of the general city's law, the common council is seeking a recommendation from the planning board on a proposed street discontinuance. The council has proposed to discontinue, uh, a portion of Burston Road described as follows.
Have to read it. You don't have to read it.
All right, we'll ju- we'll just summarize it. What it is, what it is, is the old extension of Burston Road that runs into the, the Utica College campus.
Yes.
Like a little grassy triangle area? So the story of this parcel is that, I think, we, we own it in fee as it was part of the street bed, but the Department of Transit, the State Department of Transportation had a maintenance jurisdiction. So, two years ago, Utica College approached the city and the Department of Transportation, they'd really liked to purchase this property and put a sign for Utica College there, they currently maintain the property, and it was a very long process with the DOT for them to abandon their maintenance jurisdiction, but they eventually did, and the city accepted their abandonment, and now the city would like to abandon this property, that, you know, Utica College would like for this to abandon this little triangle that you see on the map, so that Utica College can.
I don't see anything on the map, are, are you putting that map off, uh, career? Uh, there we go.
Chris thought the screen was shared, but it was not.
Well, that was, but, so, so this is the area in question, roughly, you can't see the, can you see?
Yeah, we can see it, yeah, we can see it, yeah, we can see it.
Uh, and go back to PDF.
Yeah.
Again, showing where this is in relation. So it's this area, it's not even, it's not a paved part of the road.
No.
It's a, a parcel in the right of way.
Yeah, well, and, I mean, it is technically part of the road, it's on the map, but, um, so that's basically it. Pursuant to the charter, the, the planning board gets to make a recommendation on the abandonment of streets, the discontinuance of streets, so, any questions about it?
I, I have a question, as long as they eliminate the light at that exit on Burston, that always seems to catch, I always seem to catch that when I'm in a hurry. If they're willing to, to change that to a blinking red or blinking yellow, I'd be more than happy to vote, vote for this.
Okay, I make a motion that Tony gets special dispensation to drive through that light anytime he wants.
Thing with the traffic light, unfortunately, blown.
No, that, that, they can, they can, they can eliminate the sensor that's there, because there's, all, all they need is one car at that light, and it, and, and as, if I'm in a hurry, especially to go to court or whatever, there always seems to be that one car there when I don't need it. So tell them to eliminate the sensor.
Is it, whose traffic light is it? Is it our light? Is it the state's light? Is it Utica College's?
It's, it's on their property, it's on Utica College's property, the one that, the exit on, onto Burston from their, from their, uh, parking lot, onto Burston.
It might be, that's not, that's probably a state light.
I believe.
There it is. It's green, what's your problem, Tony?
I'm, I'm not, it's not the light, it's the sensor, just tell them to get rid of the sensor.
It's probably the state sensor.
I urge you to contact your local congressman.
Yeah, definitely.
Your state senator.
Okay.
Never mind.
Is there a recommendation for this?
I, I recommend that the, this, uh, the, this be approved so that this way, uh, Utica College has access to this and maintain, and the right to maintain, uh, uh, the property of, of the road that we're discussing here.
So you, I guess, making a motion that you recommend the discontinuation of this portion of Burston Road?
Yes.
Yes.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
As long as I get that, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, four is four.
Aye, aye, aye.
Everybody's in favor?
Wonderful.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So noted.
All right, and make a motion, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Joseph makes a motion to adjourn and.
I second it.
George seconds it, okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Wonderful.
Thank you again.